Clinic in our district. We are all excited about the newly designed clinic space at the high school that the Bear Care will be operating out of this coming fall. I'd like to introduce Dr. Jessica Meehee, clinic director, who will introduce the Bear Care team and provide an overview of their services and outcomes. Welcome, Jess.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. I'll actually just let you guys do want to introduce yourselves?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm Dr. Lisa Borneman, and I teach in the Master of Social Work program at St. Catherine University.
My name is Sophia Gens, and I am a clinical social work intern at Bear Care.
And he says our main mental health provider at the clinic, too. All right, there we go. Okay, start. So I just wanted to provide, so also I feel like I need to apologize because some of you in this room have heard these presentations and slides multiple times, so it's a repeat. Sorry, Brenton, we just did this a couple of days ago. So we, our organization is a nonprofit health entity called Rise Up Health Clinics, and so we operate the Bear Care clinic. And just this fall, we actually opened a second school-based health center in St. Paul City School, which is a charter school down by the Capitol. So we're slowly kind of implementing our services there. So our mission is to provide accessible, affordable care to kids of all ages, to help improve health equity in the community and education outcomes, which supports, of course, the district mission as well. We want to try to eliminate health disparities, and we know, and I'm going to get to this in another slide, but we know that school-based health centers have really great outcomes for children that use school-based health centers compared to private or other community This is, I'm not going to read through all of this, but the way that school-based health centers differ from regular clinics that you might attend is that they're based on core competencies set by the National School-Based Health Alliance. So there's six core competencies, a seventh is sustainability up here, and that's what kind of sets us apart. So this past spring, in May of 2023, the legislator, there was, the legislative session, the last session, passed a bill for school-based health centers in Minnesota. So we became, I believe, the 19th state in the country that provides state funding to school-based health centers, and that's huge for sustainability. And then it also put into statute these core competencies with a great emphasis on never turning a child away for their inability to pay. So that's something we do at Bear Care as well. We implemented and built a billing system to remain sustainable, and so we do bill insurance if children have it, but we don't charge any out-of-pocket costs. So if a family has a deductible or copay, we don't, we don't bill them for that. So we essentially call ourselves no cost or low cost, and that is something that we feel very strongly about so that kids can continue to use us. These are just some impacts of school-based health centers. So as I said, the research and evidence does show, I'd be happy to share some resources with you, that outcomes in children who use school-based health centers are significantly impactful regardless of their race, their culture, their socioeconomic status, their insurance status. So we see kids that have healthier, excuse me, improved health outcomes, they have fewer emergency visits, they have fewer hospitalization visits, they have a higher immunization rates, and then they are also more likely to seek out mental health services in school-based health centers as well. So down at the bottom, there's a little row there that shows seat time. So last year, during the spring, we participated, participated in a research study with the National School-Based Health Alliance to show how much seat time our kids in this district were saving by using Bear Care. And on average, a student who uses Bear Care saves about, or gets about three hours more of seat time, in class seat time, compared to if they were going to a clinic outside of the school. Nationwide, there's over 2,500 school-based health centers, so we, it's a very, since the pandemic especially, school-based health centers have started to increase. We've started to see more, especially in Minnesota, there's 29 now. We're, we're very unique at Bear Care. We're the only of its kind here in the state of Minnesota, so we're nurse-led, we're nurse-founded, and we specifically formed our organization to operate the Bear Care clinic. During those legislative sessions that I talked about, Bear Care was used as a, an example, a model of how successful school-based health centers can be. This slide is a little bit hard to read, sorry, but I just wanted to show, so we're still seeing a lot of pandemic effects that related to kids' health and outcomes in, as we, as kids come in. So one of the things that MDH is watching very closely is vaccine rates. So we know that kids who are not caught up in their school vaccines are not allowed to be at school, they can be dismissed from school. So that's one of our goals, is we want to keep kids in school specifically related to vaccines. So the catch-up efforts with vaccines is still not great. We're still seeing that kids are coming to kindergarten or in middle school, they're not ready. So we increased our mobile efforts this year, going out to the different schools in the district. I also should have mentioned, we are located in North Campus, but that, but we also serve everybody within the district. So we did, I think, 14 mobile clinics, if that sounds about right, where we went out to the elementary schools, the middle schools, South Campus, alternative learning centers, some mobile clinics at transitional housing developments to try to meet kids where they need us to be and vaccinate and try to keep kids in school. So that was a big effort for us this year. So you can see on the right side, over half of our appointments this far in the school year have been related to catching kids up on their school vaccines. About a quarter or so is related to acute illnesses. I was laughing at the pink eye sign. That's been, that's been a lot this, recently in the last few weeks. And then we have about, I can't even see our numbers, 11% of mental health appointments. So Lisa and Sophia will get into that more. We also added nutrition this, this year. We have a registered dietitian who sees kids one-on-one for counseling for nutrition, but then also, I know I was working with Brenton and Brianna, I think, and some of our athletic departments and coaches to go around to the different sports teams and provide nutrition counseling. She also went into Central during bear time this fall and did nutrition classes and smoothie classes, which was, I guess, very popular, those middle schoolers. This slide is just an example to show how much our volumes have increased over the past four years. So this is our fourth academic year that we've been here in the district, and we just, each year steadily increased. So we're incredibly grateful for the space, the interim space that we're in right now. It's provided a lot more opportunity for us to increase our options and availability to families, and super excited to see the new space, too, this, this fall. We're expecting to see, this is just an estimate, probably about 1,300 kids this school year. This is just an example of our, the ages from last year, of, of the different grades and ages that we see in the clinic. One area that we know that we could focus more on is early childhood. So next academic year, we're starting to work on plans on how we can provide more outreach and awareness to early childhood. That is a pretty small population that we see right now, and what we've found is people just aren't aware of us. So, okay, just a couple demographic things. Over 97% of our families in the district have health insurance, but we're continuing to see families that are having trouble accessing care, and that's why we're here. Continuously, we do evaluations on our clinic. We have patient evaluations where they can provide us with feedback, and consistently, year after year, we're seeing about a third of families report to us that they have difficulty affording healthcare, even if they have health insurance. In Ramsey County, about 20% of people state that they have trouble affording healthcare. So it's really interesting, I think, because people think of White Bear Lake as just this really, you know, affluent kind of protected community, but we have, we have all those, those challenges here that people are facing. We also ask families, if they hadn't used Bear Care, where would you have gone? About 18 to 20% of people say they would have used the emergency room, which we know just increased costs in the community, Medicaid costs, so it has an economic impact, too. And then 4% of people, 4 to 5% of people just say they wouldn't have gotten care at all. Sure? Okay.
Sure. So we offer a lot, we offer a lot of the medical services. We've got a good list up there of that. I can speak more to the mental health aspect. So we offer individual counseling to any young person in the district, and we have seen, we've seen kids from five up to 18, so we have seen this broad spectrum of young people. And we also offer support group style, so we, we've done grief groups within some of the schools, and that helps relieve the social work and counseling staff. So if they've had, if a school has had a significant number of deaths within the community, we can, that, we can sort of take a group and walk them through, we usually do about a 10-week group, and just give that group some extra support, and so then the counseling folks can focus on other young people as needed. We have also been in the health classes, just talking about Bear Care, talking about anxiety, giving some education around that in the ninth grade health classes. So we did that in the first half of the year, and we'll do that again this spring. Trying to think, one of the things that I've been looking at for the future, we have, so we have two levels of interns. So Sophia is a clinical intern, so she's providing therapy. And then we also have, it's generalist practice, so more of a case manager, someone who can do resource referrals, who can bring people in and, and get them connected to insurance, get them connected to community resources, whatever they need. And so one of the things that we, I've been talking about is sort of what, what more can we do for the community, the school community at different levels? And so wondering about doing job fairs or wellness fairs or something like that, and having the, the case management, the generalist practice person kind of be in charge of that and doing some of that. So that's brainstorming, sorry, just brainstorm. So nothing for sure, but something that I think might be helpful. And then, trying to think of what else is important in there. I think as far as like who comes to see us, it is often, because people have to wait so long to get into mental health care these days, we can be sort of an interim. So sometimes while, while a family is waiting for an appointment in the community, they will come to see us for a short term just to get support, and then they can go to the person in the community and have longer-term care. Others are young people who are just, just struggling with stuff at school or stuff at home, and they just need some support. So we see, we see all kinds of different, we see people for all kinds of different reasons. But I love that we do not charge for insurance, so we can, they can just come to us with whatever's going on, and they don't have to worry about that being another cost that they have to bear. So, anything else?
Lisa's been a huge advocate for not billing insurance for health, mental health services, and I don't know if you want to speak to that, the reasoning on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the things that, if we build to insurance, we have to diagnose, and we can, like as a social worker, I can diagnose. I hesitate with young people because most of the young people that we see, they would not be diagnosable, which would mean then the family would have to pay out of pocket anyway, because they're coming because they're of stress or, you know, just general school anxiety. And so I feel really strongly about not diagnosing if we don't have to at these young ages, because it does carry with them. Now, if a child needs a diagnosis for some reason, to get services or something like that, that's something that we would certainly help them with. If, if a family's concerned and they think an IEP is, is needed, we're going to get them connected to folks who are going to be able to do a really full, well-rounded diagnosis of that. But my, my preference is to just allow kids to come, and if I, if, you know, we are working with them and we see that they might need a higher level of care or something, we're certainly going to encourage them to, to access that. But I, my preference is to not diagnose when they're so young.
We work really closely with the district nurses and student support services, social workers, and mental health providers within the schools, too, because our, we really wanted to be clear that we are not coming in to take over what already, the work that is already going on. I think we have an incredible support team here in the district for our students for mental health and, and nurse services in the health offices. So we work collaboratively. We, we try to find out, what, what do you guys need from us? How can we help? What are you seeing? So that's one thing Lisa's done a really great job with, is providing another referral option for when staff are seeing students that need extra help. We can't do what the staff does here in the district. Yep, they do a lot. One other thing I just wanted to mention, this fall, we started a student advisory board. It's been kind of a slower start, but our goal is to bring in high schooler students who have some interest in advocating for their fellow peers, or maybe have an interest in starting, or going into some sort of health profession in the future. So more to come on that, a little bit of a slower start, but that's in the future here. We are a staff of multiple people, interprofessional, wonderful people now. We started out with just a couple staff, and now we've grown to 12 of us. We all work part-time, many of us have full-time jobs elsewhere. Most of our providers, I think actually all of our providers are also faculty at St. Catherine University. So we have nurse practitioners who provide the health services, Lisa's a faculty at St. Kate's, and then we have Megan Bollmer, who is our registered dietitian, and she's actually also a parent here in the district, too. We also are led by a board of directors. We're always looking for more interested people to, to be part of those board of directors, so feel free to reach out if you're interested. We're funded through many different grants. We have federal, state, private grants that we're funded through. We try to keep a diverse portfolio to be sustainable. And then our billing system that we implemented last year has really helped bring in some revenue for us. Sophia, do you have any?
Do you want to talk about your experience as a student?
Yeah. So yeah, I'm in my, final year of my master's program at St. Kate's, Master of Social Work. But I think overall, Bear Care has been a really great learning experience for me. I've had a lot of experience working with all sorts of kids from different backgrounds. I think, you know, my youngest kid is five, and the oldest kid I've seen has been like 16 or 16, so a great age range, lots of diverse students coming in with a whole bunch of different issues. I've seen kids for, dealing with anxiety, life transition, stress from school, at home, and some kids who are dealing with like immediate crisis issues as well, that it's, it's just been a great learning experience. I think a great kind of foundational experience for me as I graduate and go into more of a professional therapy role.
I think one of the things that I love about Bear Care is that we do, at St. Kate's, we're really focused on interprofessional experiences. It's very important to us that our, our different, different groups work together, and so the students get that opportunity here. So we have nursing, and we have nutrition, and we've got social work, and so all of us coming together, getting to know what the other does, understanding, you know, the, we have great conversations about roles and limits, and like, what is it that you can do, and, and what, you know, what are the reasons maybe why you wouldn't do that, or those kinds of things? So it is really, I love that environment. I love being a part of an environment where we just have such rich experiences all coming together and supporting the, the students and families of the district.
Very clever. I won't go through this, but there's just some patient feedback you're welcome to look at on the slides. We tend to get really, really positive feedback. People say that they, they recommend us to their families, and, you know, how satisfied are you with the care that you receive? We get pretty high percentages for, for the health world, at least. Don't always see that. I just wanted to show this picture, so we, we had over 50, I think close to 60 people from the community be in our, our group for the Manitoba Days Parade this past summer. So I think Bear Care has moved beyond just, just us. It's become this really big community effort and collaboration where, where people reaching out, what can I do, what do you need to help? I'd love to volunteer, and it's really, I just, I think it's such a tribute to the White Bear Lake community, coming together to support it. I think that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for the team? Okay, Ms. Thompson and Ms. Davis.
As a St. Kate graduate, plus me and an alumni, it's not at all surprising to me the work that's being done in that, it is being led by St. Kate's faculty and students. Really a testament to the great work that they do there. I am wondering, when talking about some of the therapy and the group therapy and bringing the students in and creating that, is that something that we, last year, wasn't it? We had that group of students come in who had been trained in counseling, and they're working with students in the high school level, like they can see other students and they talk, and when they're partnering with social workers, have they been involved in that process at all?
Well, that would be like our tier ones, or our peer mentors, and if they're continuing with that work, Richard probably could speak to that more than I, but I think that this is kind of that next level, and so we want to start with the peer mentors, and those peer mentors are trained to identify, like, when does it need to be referred on? And so that would be how they would kind of step in, and like Jess mentioned, our teams are so strong at the building level, the social worker, the, you know, the counselors, the school psychologist, and the health team, and so they just will kind of triage around, like what does that student need? And then we have all these different resources to support them.
Yeah, it's really good work. Thank you so much for everything you do, because I know, as you said, you all also have full-time jobs, and I know what it's like to be an intern, and it's a little struggling on the, on the bills and the checkbook that, you know, the, the economic resources that you're all giving up, like, in this forest, and it's really just wonderful work. So I greatly appreciate it, and the no-cost piece is really, really important, because while people might have insurance, deductibles can keep them from going in to the clinic because they can't afford the bill they know that is going to come with it. So being able to provide those services is really great. And the numbers, it's wonderful to see how many students are using this resource and families, and it's allowing parents to stay at work and earn money while their kids can still get the services, and also not miss school, so that's great stuff. Thank you.
I was going to mention, too, that the White Bear Lake Foundation purchased Uber cards for families, so transportation is not a barrier, and so it's just been a great partnership.
That's wonderful. Ms. Davis.
Yeah, I just, first of all, I'd say thank you, also, especially for the vaccine. The vaccine is having, I'm trying to close that gap for our kids that are vaccinated, so I appreciate that so much. It looks like it's sort of, hasn't changed too much, but thinking about if you weren't doing that, we would, so thank you for that. And then just an example of, you know, you mentioned the collaboration between the school nursing program and the school staff for counseling and support. Are there some kids that might come into the nurse's office for a September or something like that, would they ever then come directly to you with their parents in between probably making an appointment during the school day, and then go back?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a huge, the nurse, school nurses are a huge referral source for us. So at North, it works out really well. If a kid comes in with a sore throat, we can get parental consent, we can just see them, swab them, if they're negative, they can go back to class, or they can go home. So that, that's huge. And then next year, when we have 11th and 12th graders, too, we'll have even greater access to more students. But yes, we do see even elementary, middle schoolers who are in the school health office, and they'll, family will call us, or the school nurse will call us and say, hey, can you get this kid, this kiddo in? And we try our very, very best never to turn anybody away, so they can just come over and see us as needed.
And have you, any of you write prescriptions? I mean, is that?
Yep. Our, yeah, so our nurse practitioners are providers. They're either pediatric or a family nurse practitioner, so they provide prescriptions. Yeah.
And then one more question, just how you're integrated with our school-linked mental health that might be not our school employees, but, you know, I know we have collaborative services with outside agencies, and so you're able to work with all three, all three of you, all work together?
Yeah, we do. So there, that's, if we're thinking that a student needs something that's going to be more long-term, we always are looking back to the school and what, what are the, what are the services that are provided at their school? And starting there, just to be sure that if we don't think it's going to be a short-term thing, or sometimes it's waiting, if they're waiting for a referral, like they've got a referral, but they're waiting for an opening, then they'll also come to see us until that opening comes. So yeah, we do work with, it's, we love that they're, that that's available, because we are just during the school year, so we want to make sure, that's kind of our focus right now, is talking in with, with the students that we're working with and their families to see, who have you got for the summer? Like, are you going to need services over the summer? Let's get you connected. So yeah, that's, we love that those are also available to the families. Other questions? Thank you also for including your list of citations.
Oh, yes.
We really appreciate it.
We're in the academic world, so.
I love, I love that. Thank you so much for all of your, your work and, and support in the district.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Move into discussion item B2, Sunrise Park Middle School, Mariner Middle School. Dr. Gillespie.
Need a formal introduction.
Dr. Pierre, welcome.
Hello, Chair Ellison, members of the board. We, as you know, we're in the midst of many exciting changes, and one of those is our transition from Sunrise Park Middle School to Mariner Middle School. And so I have Dr. Christina Pierre here today to discuss what she's working on, this exciting time in her school, so.
Welcome, Christina.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Can I just pause one second? I'm sorry, if you're, you're more than welcome to have conversations, could you just step out into the hallway? Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay.
In case you didn't read ahead, I'm starting with a question for you. What do you get when you combine blue and orange? That might happen in a middle school art classroom. You can imagine an 11 or 12-year-old mixing those colors, and what would that look like? Well, I have a, I have a better answer, but let me rephrase it. What do you get when you bring the legacies of two White Bear Lake schools together? So when, when Mariner Middle School happens, we are actually combining the legacy of Sunrise Park Middle School and before that, Sunrise Park Junior High, along with the legacy of White Bear Mariner. So we're merging into White Bear Mariner Middle School. So I'm here to tell you that we get something wonderful and vibrant and exciting, and that will be Mariner Middle School. And this is an abridged version of our mission statement. At Mariner Middle School, we love our diversity, we want our community to feel like a family, we value our students' unique strengths, and we commit to the success of every learner. And we convened a strategic action team this fall, made up of Sunrise Mariner parents, students, and staff. We met in October and November. And one of the first things we did is envision, what will this look like? If we are successful, what will it look like to have successfully opened Mariner Middle School? And we decided that that would mean that White Bear Lake High School South Campus will have transformed into Mariner Middle School. It will no longer be a high school, it will truly be Mariner Middle School. And then we talked about what, what will be important to us as we open Mariner, and so meaning and belonging. what will be important to us as we open Mariner. And so meaning and belonging, confidence and engagement and learning really came to the forefront. And so then we talked about how are we going to make sure those things happen right away when we open the doors? And so we will be communicating the history of Mariner. We think it's important that our students at Mariner know, why, why are we Mariner Middle School and where did Mariner Middle School come from? Our affinity groups right now are working on naming our collaborative spaces throughout the building. This was an idea that came from the naming committee that decided on the name of Mariner Middle School. We wanted to honor all the different students and communities that make up our school. And so this is a really exciting thing that we're doing. Our students are very excited about it. We want them to see themselves in the school. We want them to feel ownership in the school and recognize that they have a place in the school. And we want our students to feel connected to staff and to each other. So this is an example. I don't know if this is the exact collaborative space that we'll be using, but our Latinos Unidos group was the first group to come up with the name. And it was students of all ages in White Bear Lake contributed to that decision. And, and this is the name they landed on. The translation is unity is our strength. So we're really excited about, about that. We're excited to see what the other groups will come up with as well. We want our students to be confident, our students and our staff, as we open the doors to Mariner. And so we know that we're going to need to do some work on wayfinding to make sure they can find their way around that big wonderful building. And we will be, we always do a fifth grade visit in the spring. We will host it at the South Campus this spring. That visit is focused primarily on an introduction to middle school, but we just thought it's, you know, it just makes sense that we're going to bring the kids to the Mariner site rather than Sunrise Park. And then doing a really good job communicating with students and parents throughout the transition will be important. And this is the map. And so I want to talk about that, especially when it relates to wayfinding. And I'll just give you some highlights. So, you know, we wanted that family feeling. We wanted to be really responsive to the needs of students of different ages. And so I'll just point out some things. The, the red part, that's where we're going to house primarily our sixth graders. We decided on that because we wanted our sixth graders to have the easiest access to all the different areas of the school that they would need to go to. So you can see that that is very close to the Learning Commons. It is a short walk to the science classrooms. That would be the peach or orange colored areas. And they, they also have a pretty short walk to the cafeteria and a straight shot down the hall to get to the tech ed and art classrooms. And so we wanted to keep it very simple for our sixth graders. And then as, as you shift over to the right, then it'll be the seventh graders primarily in the yellow hallway. And there, there will be a little bit of seventh grade spilling over into the blue hallway as well. And then the two blue hallways will be where we house our eighth grader. So it'll be mostly eighth grade classrooms in the new wing. The new wing is that, that dark blue or purplish part of the building. And we also color-coded this map. So we worked with the architects to design the map so that the colors on the map match the colors of the building. And so the different collaborative spaces each have kind of a, a primary color that stands out. And so we made the map match the collaborative spaces. And then we're going to enhance that with signs outside the classroom doors so that students will know very clearly, I'm in the red hallway or I'm in the yellow hallway. And, and then we're, we'll also put out lots of signs with arrows, like this way to the gym and this way to the cafeteria. All right. And then engagement and learning is always going to be primary for us. We want our students to have a voice. We want them to have choices in how they learn, how they show what they know. We want them to feel engaged and challenged. And we want our, all these wonderful spaces that we're moving into be, to be leveraged for student learning. And so we've been really thoughtful about our decisions about moving to Mariner. We've given teachers choices about what, what is it that you need in a classroom? Do you need a classroom near a collaborative space? Do you need a classroom with certain technologies? And then spent time talking to the South Campus teachers and the Sunrise teachers to match them up to the right classroom in the right area. Then we also made sure that our teachers had choices about the furniture that'll be in their classroom. So they're, they're getting all new furniture and teachers had a choice of, I think, three different floor plans. And they had input at a time on what the floor plans would look like. And then they were able to select, yes, this is, this is the set of furniture that, that will work best with the way that I want to teach. So we've been busy with classroom assignments, furniture selection, all the things that you have to think about when you're opening in middle school. So how are we going to run drop off and pickup? Because there's a lot of that, right? Do we have enough bike racks? Do we have all the lockers we need? Do we have the lockers in the places that students really need to be able to access them within the building? We've been doing a lot of things to help people acclimate to the building already. We've been doing almost all of our staff professional development at the South Campus this year. We've also been hosting a lot of our school events at South Campus whenever possible to help people just get used to being there and, and being confident in that space. So what's next? In May, we will have our sunrise sunset celebration to, to say goodbye to Sunrise Park. And we will also be hosting the fifth grade visits at the, the South Campus, Mariner site. In June, we will move out of Sunrise. And in August, we will move into Mariner. And then we will have the big Mariner open house.
Questions do you have? Thank you. Any questions? Pierre. Oh, Ms. Davis?
I'm just so excited. There's so much great space for you all to move into. And just, I've taught many, many years for Sunrise. I know that there's just some limitations to that space, just for storage or, I mean, I think about the theater in the south and what a great thing that'll be for you all to have and the tech rooms and all the, just tons of stuff there that, you know, wasn't available before. And this is something for you. So I'm excited for the community. I have one request, and that was a middle schooler interviewing one day for, as a, as a board member. His one request was a bike, an air pump at the bike.
That's a great idea.
And he'd be doing for a, for a Mariner, I think Central. But he's a big rider and had a couple flats. And then he said, cool, you know. So anyway, I said I would pass that on.
Now's the time to bring those ideas forward. So thank you. Other questions or comments? Dr. Arcand?
I just like how we're merging most schools together because that's a student of Sunrise Park Junior High and of Mariner High School. Both of those are important for me growing up. And they both helped me develop who I am. So bringing them together, and I kind of like, I'm going to do it together anyway. I like that idea. So it's just thank you. And I'm really excited to see what happens.
I do have a fifth grader right now. She'll be at Mariner this fall. And she keeps calling it Marinera Middle School. So just beware. That might be a thing. But thank you. This is really exciting.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And our last discussion item, B3, Ethnic Studies update. Shaver is babish.
Good evening, Chair Ellison, members of the board. Dr. Kazmicek. I have the pleasure of kicking off the update on Ethnic Studies. And really, I'm just going to speak very briefly on some of the legislative changes that were seen with social studies that really pertained to Ethnic Studies. In 2021, the K-12 social studies standards have now been, the commissioner has approved the draft. And now it's going through the rulemaking, which will take up to 18 months. And when they are adopted, the proposed K-12 standards will be fully implemented in the 2026, 2027 school year. And part of the legislative changes are to have an Ethnic Studies course offered at the high school. That doesn't mean all kids need to take that course, but it needs to be offered. And I'm very happy to say we already have that. In our district, we started those conversations in 2017, 2018 with Ms. Brianna Santos Scoy and our former principal, Dr. Alison Gillespie. And so this really came from students saying, we need this in our schools and at our high school. And so right now, we have two Ethnic Studies courses that are options for students in our social studies content area. And so we have the History of the United States and World History, both Ethnic Studies. And so I'm going to pass it on to our principal of the Unified High School, Russ Reitz.
Thanks. I just want to provide a little background into where Ethnic Studies fits and how it is going to deliver, help us deliver on our message of this, this idea of all students belong. So we had the opportunity to work with Dr. Gunn and put together a shared mission statement for the high school. We had some educators gather a few weeks ago. So I thought I'd highlight that mission statement. The part that stands out to me is ensuring each student sets sail, a little way on words there, their own course to personal and intellectual excellence. Together, a school is committed to a culture of welcoming, belonging and leading. I share two objectives with you that I really think get to the core of trying to accomplish within our Ethnic Studies content. And not just there, but certainly in those courses. 100% of students will honor individual identities and cultures and treat others with dignity and respect. And 100% of our students will graduate with pride in their journey. So as we continue to, to work and grow in that area, a few of our Ethnic Studies teachers, along with Brianna and Vince and myself, went to a conference in Seattle. And it was, it was a great conference. A few things that came out of that conference that I thought fit well with that mission statement. This idea of critical consciousness, helping our students achieve an in-depth understanding of the world into question and to wonder and to think critically. The idea of interconnectedness, the state of being connected with each other. We talk a lot about agency. And when we find meaning and learning and we connect it to our own history and heritage, I think we, we create agency amongst our students. This idea of historical literacy, asking our students to, to read critically, to write critically, and to engage in meaningful discussions with each other is certainly a big aspect of what we're asking our students to do in our Ethnic Studies courses. Unity, really promoting this idea of togetherness and oneness. And then the idea of intersectional identity development, looking at issues facing our society through the lens of race, religion, gender and class. And then just questioning the, the narrative, right, and considering counter narratives along with our learning. So all of that and more is happening in these Ethnic Studies courses. And I think Brianna's going to share a timeline with you.
Yeah. Why don't you introduce yourself?
I'm Brianna Santos Scoy. I think I know most of you. I'm the Student Family Community Engagement Coordinator for the district. So I'm going to share just a few little things, just some context about, I think most of you know what Ethnic Studies is, because I've been here before, I have. But some of that and then a little bit about the conference. And then we have this most special guest here with us today, who's actually like embodying this and making this real every day for students in the classroom. So just a quick timeline, conversations about this started in like the 2017, 2018 school year. We offered a few years later during the summer, an optional PD on Ethnic Studies pedagogy for all nine through 12 social studies teachers. We started then like meeting with you and Hannah and working with you on, just like working around what is the, your current curriculum and how does it need to shift for it to become Ethnic Studies, an Ethnic Studies classroom? The first year, there were three sections, right, in US history. The second year, there were six sections. This year, there could be five sections because you have, you're kind of bursting at the seams. And then last year was the first formal year that we offered World History Ethnic Studies at South, which is super exciting. So the PD is ongoing for that. And they have five section of, of World History Ethnic Studies this year. And I'm, I'm kind of anticipating that it might be more next year. Yeah. So, I love that little hummingbird. So these are some just critical components that move Ethnic Studies pedagogy beyond culturally responsive and culturally relevant pedagogy, which I think is a common misconception that they are the same thing. When actually Ethnic Studies encompasses those and is, is more than that. That's why the CX, RX, PX, sort of like the, indicates like the healing part of Ethnic Studies. So some critical components are, it's decolonial, it centers love, it centers healing, authentic care, it's never dehumanizing, it's anti-racist, it's historically responsive, it centers students in our communities, it's culturally sustaining, it centers, it centers ancestry, indigeneity and diasporic indigeneity, and it centers indigenous epistemologies, which is something Mark had, like, I think all of the teachers, it was like something totally new. I don't know if he took any classes on this or anything like that. Yeah. So Mark had like the critical components of like really being good at making, building relationships. As soon as he already had that, the hardest, biggest part, like set. So a little bit about demographics and focus. So the courses are really intended, intended to center decolonial and rehumanizing curriculum, including erased and marginalized narratives, curriculum and practices that is both culturally responsive and culture, and community responsive. It's healing at its best, it's healing and transformative, which I know that Mark and the other teachers are really trying to like make that a real experience for students in the classrooms every day, a transformative space. So when we look at demographic data that Jen provided for us, thank you, and figured out how to put it into a, I struggled with that for like a hour. And then she fixed it. So thank God for techy people. So when we look at the data that we're going to look at in a second, we can see a few different things, right? So the, the students that are interested in Ethnic Studies are super diverse. It's not just, you know, students in Latinos and Latinos who I have convinced to take this class. It's really diverse. And we also can see that, you know, we're going to continue, yeah, we can probably go to that. So if you want a second to look at it. We can also, when we look at it, we can also see that, like, there's areas that we want to continue to focus on. So we want to continue to focus on areas of educator and student identity and reflection, community action and connection, and culturally sustaining curriculum. And then also, we really want to, sometimes in the fall, like when we're talking, we see that there's some gaps of students that, like, why are they, why did they have to take this class? And then we talked to them, they didn't know about it. And so like, those are things that we want to continue to work on to make sure that students, I think that happens every registration with a myriad of classes. But especially with these classes, really making sure that we are being intentional about sharing the information with students so that they have an opportunity to register. It's not like two days before school starts or the week after school starts and we're flooding the counselor's office. Sometimes happens. I have been guilty of doing that many times. So this, this is sort of like where we're at. And you can look at that later. But I think that, you know, we always, like, we were just saying, we want to see the numbers continue to go up. And we have. So, so the conference that Russ mentioned, we went to the Cito Conference. And we learned about some of the things that Russ just mentioned, which are on this. This is the tiawi. So in Nawa, which is a indigenous language in Mexico, it means moving forward. And the conference really centered on their framework, which they call tiawi, which includes the six tenets that Russ mentioned. It includes community agreements, which I think last year or the year before, all of the high school classrooms did like classroom kind of norms or community agreements, which was really impactful for students. was really impactful for students. And this in the concepts of self-reflection, personal community transformation, the will to act, and precious knowledge. So those were like the core, that was sort of the core focus of the weekend. It talked about ongoing connections that we need to build within our own communities, but also I think we made ongoing connections, not only with the people who run the organization of Cheeto, but with other educators. We were like the Minnesota cohort, but there was someone from Carlson College, which was super cool. And then she's like I've talked to her since, she's very well connected with sort of what's happening with ethnic studies in the state of Minnesota. But we also made connections with people really across the United States that are working on this too in their districts, which is really, I think invaluable, not just for us, but like for the future of where we're going with this, right? And so what we really want to do is to continue to create this pathway, right? So we're talking there, we're talking about what a 12th grade option might look like. We're talking about what it might look like to have some ethnic studies ELA classes, what would it look like in middle school? And that was sort of part of the original conversation, like in my mind, I was like every year, we're going to add a class and like in 12 years, it's going to be K-12. And that's just really not how anything in life functions. And so we have, but we're talking about quality as opposed to quantity, right? So we want to do it right. And so those are all things that we're talking about. We also did complete and submit a Grow Your Own grant opportunity, which would be really exciting for, we have a teacher like intro to education class currently at South that's been there for a long time. And like part of the thing, one of the discussions that we've had is that like there is not a lot of students, like not a lot of Latino students, not a lot of African American students or Asian students that are taking part of that class. And so like how can we maybe bring some of this pedagogy into a classroom like that to encourage like students of color to take this intro to ed class and like eventually maybe come back to White Bear Lake as teachers, which would be amazing. And so that's what we filled out the grant to do. And so cross your fingers, think of that. So hopefully we'll hear about that soon. So that's what I wanted to share. One thing that I did want to say, so we're doing ongoing professional development, we're still working with Mr. Clever Ortiz Stinchey, who is one of the leaders over at Minneapolis College for ongoing pedagogy and support for the teachers, right, and for the pathway. We do, we're working on like student reflection, staff reflection, community action, class visits and observations, community connections and collaborations. And this is a picture, just one little example of when we had, we worked with the U of M, the Chicano Studies Department, we had a guest speaker, Roberto Rebeles, come and speak with students and all of the ethnic studies classes from North came. And then we worked with students at South as well. And that student on the top left is Javier Garcia Torres, who was one of the students that came to speak to you all when he was asking if you would like allow us to have US history, ethnic study. So I just was like, I'm totally included. Even this PowerPoint, I didn't ask him, so I'll fill it later. So that's what I wanted to share. And then like Mark, most special guest, I want to say before you say, share anything, like I just really appreciate what you do with students every day and like your openness to do this work is really, it's hard work because it includes a lot of extra self-reflection and like deep identity reflection and all of that to like make this real in the classroom for students. And I just appreciate you and your openness and you like doing that in relationships you feel with students. I appreciate it.
Make it harder now to talk.
I'll introduce you. I'll introduce you and give you a moment so we can. Okay, introduce yourself.
No, I'm Mark Dabchat. I teach high school social studies, obviously ethnic studies, and also just regular general American history as well. Brianna, I guess going to that conference really, I think just reinforced the great work Brianna has done because I felt when I was listening to these professors and talking to our teachers who teach us in Seattle that okay, we're doing the right thing here in 10th grade and even our kids curriculum wise are getting the right message. We're doing these same things. There's obviously things we need to get better at and areas that need to improve, but I feel really good about where we're at and where we're going with this. The growth going to the high school, it should solid in the 11th graders and the world history. We're taking a step in the right direction, there's no doubt. Had a chance to talk to teachers about 9th grade, about getting this in a 9th grade of ways we can keep growing this, you know, nine through 12. It's just changed me as a teacher, honestly, working with Brianna and just, you know, being at these things and talking about how we really look at education and getting to know students. I was on the same committee Russ was talking about with our district or our high school coming together and kind of going to mission statement. And one of the things that just kind of came to my head was over and over again, relationships and love and what really our new belief is going to be like. And that just is what ethnic studies is all about. If you come into my classroom or Hannah's classroom, it just feels a little different because everyone feels like they're part of the team and they're kind of all for each other. Some, we may have saw the letter together in the newspaper, I think it was last week, about ethnic studies from our own White Bear Press. And I showed it to the students and the article was about, not necessarily White Bear Lake, but about the proposed legislation going through. And the article said that they were afraid that we were indoctrinating the kids and that was going to build division. And I showed that to the kids and they were like dumbfounded. They're like, build division? This is exactly the opposite of what this class does. And it just made me feel so good because it was genuine honesty from those students. Like, what do you think? I'm like, oh my gosh, what's? It was crazy that they couldn't even understand that point of view and what this class is doing because it's making them think critically, they're trying to find the truth, they're trying to figure out, you know, how we can make our community and our state and our country better, learn from the past. And I think that's really what the course is truly about and accepting everyone, obviously, in the class and being proud of who they are. So it's just an honor to teach, an honor to work with Brianna and everyone who supports this because it's really neat to be in a district that is ahead of the curve. I've talked to a lot of other teachers in the state and they're like asking me, well, how is this working White Bear? Because we're thinking and doing it, but we don't know if our district's ready yet. And how cool is our district's ready? You know, we're kind of, you know, ahead of the curve. So I thank you all for that for sure. I could talk for hours about this, obviously, but if you have any questions, I'm sure that's probably a better way to go.
Thank you all so much. Any questions? Dr. Neumaster.
I just want to say it's a long time coming and I'm really, really glad that this good work is going forward and our community is supporting it. Our kids are better prepared for the world.
Any other comments? Ms. Boyd?
Have you received any parent feedback over the years to your home plans?
Not one negative, that's for sure. Not one. And not even a hint.
Last possible. Any surprise parents or?
I think like I've heard from some parents, well, through from their students, talking about coming home and talking at the dinner table about something that they talked about in class. And I think their parents were surprised at like, wow, we're have, like didn't expect to have that kind of conversation with their student. And it was like kind of a, well, the student, I've had several students share similar experiences and that they felt like it was kind of a transformative moment with their parents. Like we're talking about this for the first time sort of and they felt really good about it, you know, so.
We've had great conversations at conferences, so many times. This is the first time my students, my son or daughter's actually talked about school, especially history. I think the funniest comment was one of my mom was saying like, yeah, and now it's getting arguments with dad now a little bit at the dinner table. It's so good for him and it's good for his dad too to kind of hear, you know, history, you know, maybe a different way than what they may be taught or learned back in the day. So yeah, it's been, it's been really good. But yeah, I'm not, I'm surprised, but not surprised because it's effective, you know, so people are taking it. But yeah, it's been really positive from parents and students.
Both core, right? But they're elected.
Yeah, yeah, it's not elected, but that, and that's the hard part too about the numbers. It's, you know, we have AP US history. We have a lot of students that want to take, you know, AP US. There's honors US history and then there's ethnic studies, American history in general. So it's a lot and those teachers are pretty proud of the classes too. So it's kind of, we want to fight for students, you know, and that you just want to educate them what the classes are about, who to make the best decision for themselves.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, I just think a key thing that you said that I just wanted to draw attention to is that the students are ready. It's not about whether the district is ready or not, they're ready and they're ready in every district. It's just that getting the adults to see the benefit of this and it has nothing to do with shame or it's learning. It's learning so we can grow and we can do better as we move forward. And I see the generations of today, I mean, they're way beyond where we were and I am very thankful that it is finally being offered as something that they can take and learn true history. Because I know that I did not learn true history when I was growing up and I did not learn a lot of things that my family and my ancestors had gone through because for some reason we had to tie that to meaning, that means all these people are bad. And that is not true. We all know that it's not true. This is just a moment to teach history in the way that it should have been taught all along so that we can learn and we can grow and we can do better. And so I just am so thankful and I believe this was one of my first board meetings I went to is when you came, because you came right with the students and presented and I just remember going, yeah, this is, this is good stuff and I'm so thankful to be a part of it. So thank you all for all the work you do because I truly appreciate it. Now to get my daughter to sign up for the class.
What's her name?
Dr. Neumaster?
I'm looking back at the past and as a mom of an international adoptee who was often asked if she was a foreign exchange student because she was one of three in her elementary school. And history was always from colonialized, you know, and she learned more of her history outside of school, different places. And as an adult in her 40s now with a contemporary group that gathers, they talk about, you know, their kids and maybe their grandkids are going to have a better, more even view of how history happens. And it's all over the world. We're looking at it now. We need to know what's happened over the last thousands of years to understand today. So thanks.
So two things I've been thinking about. One, I've been in history education for 20 years and this is, this is really good history. You know, and the moment when, earlier in my career, when I started to realize that we needed to think differently about the way we teach is when I noticed there's no women in the narrative. And that's an important identity for me. And so I was looking at the narrative and saying, why am I only seeing Susan B. Anthony and Rosa Parks and Harriet Tubman and that's it, period? And then as I started to, you know, progress in my career, then I started to think, well, who else is not there? And so I think what we're doing here is we're addressing absence and helping students to see absence and correct it. To ensure that, you know, me being a woman is really important to my identity, I want to see women in the historical narrative because they were there. Students should see themselves, whoever they are, in the historical narrative because people have been in Minnesota, in the United States, not in isolation. So it's like we, we have this shared history, experience differently. And so as a professional in this field, it fills me with so much pride that this is what's happening in this district. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that I was at the social studies conference today in St. Paul and I, the state's, the MDE social studies specialist and the two ethnic study specialists were there. And we were talking about this and I said, oh, it's on our board agenda for the evening. And this MDE social studies specialist said, I use White Bear as an example when I write curriculum, when I work with districts, when I'm looking at how to do this in other places, I use what you have done. I said, can I share that at the board meeting? And she said, yes, you can. So people are noticing this work and we're ahead of the curve, yes, but we're also, it's been a long time coming. So I'm really grateful for the good history that's happening in this district. So thank you. All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move into closed session for negotiations. This portion of the meeting may be closed to consider strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies or developments or discussion and review of labor negotiation proposals conducted pursuant to Minnesota statute 179A.01 to 179A.25. If I could get a motion to move into a closed session. Motion by Dr. Neumaster?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Thompson. All in favor of moving to closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And we are in closed session.